Good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020 meeting of the NACXAT Board of Commissioners. This is called order. If you'll please first join me in a moment of silence. Now if those of you in the room will stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the face of America, who withstands one nation, the individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order. I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment. And Karen reported that we have no items for public comment.
That's right.
Thank you.
Karen, is anyone?
Great. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and I understand that there is a modification to one item.
Consider comment. Item D3 is consideration of resolution authorizing water payment management resulting from state executive order 124. When we put your package together, after we put your package together, the governor changed the date in this resolution from June 1st to July 29th. So we ask that you modify this resolution to note that date change. And that's the only change. Everything else is still the same, that can't cut off payment for non-payment, no late fees, and we have to offer again, the only change is the date for us to July 29th.
Mr. Lyte, is this acceptable to approve the consent agenda with the modification of a date?
You can.
Yes, sir. Unless there's any discussion, though. Is there any discussion or is there a motion?
I think motion if we approve the consent agenda with the change of date as noted for the executive.
Second. Thank you. There are a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda, there are public hearings, and the first being the proposed operating budget.
If I may, just some updates from the workshop that you had on the 27th. As you know, the manager's recommended general fund budget presented on May 20th, total $21,341,506, which is a decrease of $2,170,908 for the current fiscal year. No new tax increases recommended. Current tax rate in the current year is 31.7 cents, of which 2.7 cents is for townwide beach nourishment, 17.5 of that is for the municipal service district. The revenue neutral rate is the recommended FY21 tax rate of 26.5 cents, of which 2.25 is for townwide beach nourishment, and the new MSD tax rate is 14.3. The manager's recommended water fund budget amounted to $3,323,211, a decrease of $866,750 for the current fiscal year, and no water rate increase is recommended. At the May 27th workshop, the board recommended adding back a part-time fat house cleaner. Other adjustments included additions and deletions amounting to an additional $15,000 added to the budget. The board also considered that the manager's recommended budget was conservative and asked staff to bring back the list of expenditures based on increasing sales and occupancy. Staff is recommending that the board consider adjusting its revenue projection based on the following. If you're made, the manager's recommended recognizes revenue that sales tax is 50% for July, 60% for August, 70% for September, and 100% for October. What we would recommend, if this is something you wanted to consider, sales tax be increased to 75%, 80%, 80%, and 100% in October. Then in occupancy, right now, July is 50%, August is 80%, September 80%, and 100% in October. We would recommend that you consider 75% for July, 80% August, and 80% September. These revenue increases would net $354,256 to the general fund, and an additional $31,192 contributed to the restricted municipal service district force of sales management. $125,256 would be added to the water fund, under the assumption usage is not decreased based on higher occupancy than originally projected in the recommended budget. With the recommendation for the following expenditures to be added back to the budget. And again, these are just items that we would recommend you consider if you were to adjust revenue. Recommend a stand-on sprayer, spreader added at $13,500. A replacement residential trash truck, debt payment would be $67,592. Adding back vehicles, facilities maintenance pickup, debt payment of $11,781. Free police vehicles would add $51,123. We would add back hours that were cut from a part-time office assistant of $11,300. We would add back the COLA increases, which would amount to $170,845. And then there's two, excuse me, Dally Park Special Event, adding back at $5,000. And then two HVAC contracts for maintenance added to Station 16 and Station 21. Again, no new tax rate would increase as a result of this. These expenditures being added back or the use of unbounds would be necessary to add that revenue back. And adding these revenues back, there would still be a reduction of $751,677. And there are some items that you may wish to consider should you realize that revenue in the fall. We would recommend you look at building security retrofit at $59,000. $250, a facilities master plan for public works at $50,000. Employee survey, which would total $9,000, and adding back the sidewalk at Malpo's, 10 and 1/2 shots. And that, I just wanted to highlight the update before the public.
Thank you.
Mayor, during the public hearing, do you consider the proposed budgets submitted by the manager? I would ask staff whether there are any public comments received on the... There aren't any public comments. If anybody in your group wishes to comment publicly, you can do so. Otherwise, we will close the public hearing on the proposed budget at this time.
Great. Thank you. That would bring it back to the, to the board for discussion then, having heard, having discussed this a couple of weeks ago, and then heard the manager's recommended changes. What's the, what's the board's will?
I just think, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, we planned on next week having a workshop, and then in two weeks, voting on the budget.
That's correct.
We might just want to extend this meeting to the next week, have the workshop, and then possibly vote on it after that workshop. It's just a thought.
Why don't we have a workshop?
Okay. 9:00 AM? Next Wednesday at 9:00 AM.
I will.
Okay.
If, if that's the board's will, then we will just extend this meeting to the workshop next week.
Do you want to move today?
No, I'm fine. We have the adoption, I'm fine. That's okay.
Very good. Thank you. But don't let me forget to recess. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider a text amendment to the UDO. Michael, what's this, you or Mr. Lyte?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll take that. So we begin the public hearing to consider a text amendment to the UDO submitted by Tim Cowan and Megan Dixon to allow tutoring facilities/learning center as a permitted use within the C2 general commercial zoning district. I understand that the staff's analysis was presented by testing planning and development director Kelly Wyatt, who is joining us.
Morning, Kelly.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll jump right in, but as was noted, the applicants are Megan Dixon and Kim Cowan. They're seeking to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to permit tutoring facilities and a learning center as a permitted use within the C2 general commercial zoning district. They have provided a detailed explanation of their request and their reasoning for making this application, but they do want to offer tutoring, both part-time and full-time, to registered homeschool children ages six and up. As staff was looking at the existing UDO, there were only two uses that were similar. Those uses were childcare facility and school. However, as we looked at the definitions for both of these uses, this proposal did not fit either of those definitions, so we recommended that the applicants go ahead and apply for a text amendment. As part of that, we've provided a definition for the use. That definition states that this type of facility is a private, for-profit, or nonprofit use for the instruction of students and subjects and materials commonly taught in primary and secondary schools for test preparation or the teaching of music and visual arts. We did provide a parking standard that is consistent with several other service and institutional uses, and we showed the board how we would amend the table of uses to reflect the requests. Also, in review, staff found that the proposed use was consistent with the comprehensive land use plan and the desire to encourage land uses that serve the needs of both year-round and seasonal residents in support of the town's vision of the community. At their April 21st meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend adoption as the ordinance is presented, and staff would recommend adoption as well. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we do have Kim Cowan available. She's on Zoom as well. So if you have any questions of staff or of the applicant, we're happy to answer. Thank you.
Ms. Lyte? Not appear to be, there don't appear to be any questions, Kelly, so if the applicant wishes to present anything.
I think Kelly summed it up really well. That was, we're just, we're trying to help out all of these brand-new homeschool families. We're excited about it.
Does the board have any questions for Ms. Cowan? Thank you, ma'am. Do you have any comments from members of the public, Matt Clark, on this guy? Or any other staff? Karen, did you receive anything? If anybody online who wishes to comment on this proposed zoning ordinance text amendment. Does the board wish to receive any other information or further information regarding this proposal before you begin your deliberations? If not, we will now conclude the public hearing, and the board may deliberate on this proposed text amendment.
Thank you. Board, you didn't have any questions, so someone may want to put a motion on the table for the purposes of discussion?
Mayor, I make a motion that the text amendment be approved as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
The item on our agenda is a public hearing for a text amendment considering temporary uses.
Mayor, we'll begin the public hearing to consider a series of zoning ordinance text amendments which would amend the UDO pertaining to temporary uses or the temporary alteration of uses during declared emergencies. On this matter, we'll have the staff's presentation provided by Director of Planning and Development, Michael Sander.
Good morning. We're returning to you with this text amendment. We discussed this with the board at their workshop on May 20th. The board at that time did have a couple of suggested or requested changes. I referenced those in my memo, and I'll go over those when I go through the ordinance. And I don't know, would you like me to do my screen share? Is that the easiest way? All right, here with... So let me walk the board and the public through the ordinance, and I do want to mention before I forget, assuming the board votes favorably on this article, on this, excuse me, on this amendment, the board may want to consider waiving a minor site plan fee with temporary use permit, and I would take those for a period of 45 days. The first, the provisions we changed, we, one, and this was not something that the board had raised, but when we started to work with some of the applicants, considering changes, we suggested or identified that it may be preferable to change the reduction of parking from required to existing parking, and I can explain why, but we did also, at the board's request, increase the percentage reduction from 20% to 25%. Change from required to existing, based on our calculation of parking in our ordinance, it can become difficult for some uses, restaurants and shopping centers particularly, because of how their parking is calculated to determine what existing parking is, and it can actually change with the change of operations or the change of uses, change of uses really specific to shopping centers. So we've looked at changing it or recommending that it be changed to a reduction of existing parking. And then also, there was some need to clarify 415.3 of the proposed text amendment to ensure that the event that necessitated the expiration of temporary use permit occurred later, that there could be instances where circumstances owing to the declaration may occur or may end after the actual declared emergency is over, and we wanted to make sure that we allow for those accommodations or the accommodations of temporary permits beyond the expiration of the declared emergency as necessary. So the proposed text amendment, we of course have a definition for what a temporary use permit is, Part 1, and Part 2. We wanted to clarify, or we wanted to really tie this into other permitting requirements, and the easiest way to do that was to require or essentially state that any temporary changes to sites as part of a eligible activity under the issuance of a temporary use permit are considered minor site plans. 3.8.6 has a provision that relates to instances where there's a conditional use permit on a property, and that would allow for the conditions of that conditional use permit to be temporarily modified as part of a temporary use permit. I think I explained to the board, some of this, it's the nature of our UDO, there's a lot of redundancy, so if the board is to spread this amendment throughout, when we're talking about a new process or a new procedure, we have to mention quite a few sections. Again, this relates to relating the temporary use permit to minor site plans. Part 5, a big listing of actions that are administrative in nature, and this would include temporary use permits. Part 6 is where we really get into the allowance of temporary use permits and what the basis for them is, essentially, where we're allowing for reasonable temporary accommodation of zoning regulations to circumvent the furthering of purposes of the emergency declaration in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare. The applicability is broadly applicable, not just to the current pandemic, but also to future emergencies, we believe. We think it's useful in that way. But this would allow for temporary uses, allow for the modification of uses on a temporary basis, and allow for certain provisions in the UDO to be waived, with the exception of environmental provisions. And I do want to talk about one of these briefly that's come up in our review. Under Article 10, we do allow for the waiver of sign provisions. We do limit that when we talk about 415.2, where we would limit basically no more than one additional temporary sign. So it is limiting, but we don't have much discretion. We, obviously, when we're talking about uses or modification of uses, we, we are, we have the discretion to determine whether or not that modification of the use is necessary based on the defense of, related to the emergency. With signage, we don't necessarily have the ability to make that interpretation, and this only came up in the last 12, 24 hours when we were starting to look at things. There are a lot of temporary signs in the community that I think are helpful, obviously, but we feel like we're in a position of, in some cases, maybe even issuing a temporary use permit simply for signage because someone would like to have an additional banner. And if the board is okay with that, I think that's perfectly fine, but I think it's important to recognize that we will not have much discretion in terms of interpreting the nature of that comment. Another thought I had was that we only allow for the waiving or variance of sign provision as needed or required in staff's. Some, an applicant can't ask for a waiver of the sign provision, but the town manager and the UDO administrator could grant a waiver because the town manager and the UDO administrator feel like additional signage is necessary for public safety or to provide notice to the public about operational change. So it's really the board's wish in terms of whether or not they feel like a waiver, a broad waiver is allowable or is okay, recognizing that we're not going to have much discretion, or if signage is something that, in the nature of these emergencies, is not necessarily appropriate to allow for waivers. How did it answer any questions that the board has on that?
Are there any questions for Mr. Sander? Mr. Paul?
A couple. Assuming that the mayor signs something for one week, the applicant can still keep it out there for 90 days under the way this...
You know, I imagine that we would actually, and this will come up today, so when we, assuming this is adopted, we could issue the permit for up to 90 days, but I expect we would issue permits for 30 days and consider renewing them based on the status of things. They could be issued for up to 90 days. And then we also have the provision that they would expire upon, and, you know, certain triggering events.
Yeah, I guess, like usual, I can't find what I'm looking for.
So it's under...
Look, look at 4.11, 1.5, 1.3. That says it can be done up to 90 days.
Correct.
And then there was another section that allowed the mayor to do it for a specific timeframe.
It's in further down in that paragraph.
Okay. And then there was somewhere where one was changed, whichever comes first, and it was changed to whichever comes later.
Right. It's all in that same section.
Okay.
Boom.
So my question is, the same question.
Sure.
So if, in other words, if you think about it, we have 100-day season, and if something happens and we want to limit the issue to one week, somebody's going to take full advantage if they can go 90 days, is how I read it. Now, if you tell me I'm just reading it wrong, so be it.
Yeah, I believe it's in the discretion of the town manager and the UDO administrator in terms of what the expiration date is, but they can't issue it for longer than 90 days. So we could issue, I believe, in my opinion, in the way it's written, it said the temporary use permit shall be issued within expiration date. So when we're issuing them, they have to have an expiration date, and that expiration date cannot exceed 90 days, but it doesn't have to be. And at the discretion of the town manager and the UDO administrator, such temporary use permits shall expire upon the termination of the declaration, the end of the circumstances under or impacted associated with the declaration, causing the need for the accommodation, or upon the timeframe set by the mayor, whichever is later. And I think, proceeding cautiously, I'm inclined to look at either 30 or 45 days because we expect the next phase to begin towards the end of this month, and some of the accommodations may or may not be necessarily on that period.
Reading it differently.
Yeah. The way I would read the application of that paragraph is, you know, let's say we had a weather emergency, like a hurricane, and the declaration of emergency is likely to last a week or two weeks.
One week.
Let's say a week. So that's going to be the end of the emergency, is in a week, but everybody's sign flew down, and they need time to get new ones. So we would have a discussion among ourselves about, do we want to allow a temporary provision for everybody to put up a banner, and how long does it take to get a sign, and how long do we want to give them? 30 days? So we would, the timeframe for the permits, for the temporary permits, would be set at 30 days, assuming everybody could get their new signs put up by then. If time company got blown down soon, and you need 90, then you could make it as long as 90 days, but you can't make it longer. I just read it as working for everything up to 90 days.
I read it as somebody can take advantage of a situation that we've declared everything's fine after a week, but they still have 90 days. That's how I read it. I'm just sorry.
It's on the UDO administrator or the town manager to make sure it's mentioned there properly. Is that...
Yeah, they only get 90 days if we give them that. That's my opinion.
And if that's the attorney's opinion, then... And then the, moving on, the next thing I have is food trucks and people using food trucks, and they've got their entire side of the food truck as their business logos and et cetera, et cetera, and they park out there. They beat every parking standard, whatever. How do you account for the signage on a food truck that's operating in the same spot for 90 days?
Yeah, I don't believe our current UDO would regulate that as signage.
Okay.
If it's an actual functioning food truck, if it's not intended to be... If it's an actual functioning food truck, if it's not intended to be parked as signage and that requires some interpretation, but if they're operating, I don't think we would regulate it as signage.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Zaner?
Mr. Mayor. We've effectively, the board asked the staff to effectively work with these terms for applicants who've come forward, and you referenced having dealt with some of them and having issues arise. How many of the, how many businesses have you worked with?
So we've issued permits under the crowd gathering provisions that would expire today for wave riders and Lucky Twelve. We've worked with Lu Casa and Morning Dew Coffee. I met yesterday with Fat Boys and they submitted an application that we would probably issue today. Talked to wave riders about a modification of their business, so I think that's the entirety. We know that there are others we can touch base with and, you know, we're trying to, we're hoping that they're proactive and coming to speak with us. We had a flyer created that referred to that share on social media and at the police app that they can provide to businesses that they interact with them. So we've had some good conversations and I think hopefully we've been, you know, helpful to people. The ones that we issued or that we will be issuing, you know, they're using parking area or they're using outdoor area that they have that is not currently customer service area, as customer service area. The ones that we determined did not need to be issued a temporary use permit, they're still doing to-go. They just may have added some seats in existing paved area on their property, non-parking area, or they have made some accommodations to their sites to better accommodate pedestrians and lines and takeout windows and that sort of thing. But it's been a valuable process, it's been important, I think.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anything further from the staff? Do we have any comments from members of the public on this tax amendment, this Madam Clerk, Karen? Does the board wish to receive any other information regarding these proposed tax amendments before you begin deliberations? If not, we will conclude the public hearing at this time and the board may move on to deliberations.
Board, any conversation? Staff's work on this, appreciate the board's thoughtfulness on this. The board was immediately interested in helping the businesses who've been affected by this, and I have sense that our business community appreciates that. Thank you. The discussion and perhaps a motion might be.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that the U D O texted and it's been through to the present.
Motion in a second. Now, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, staff, planning staff.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Did you want to entertain a second motion regarding the waiver of a fee for forty-five days?
Yes, thank you.
Make a motion that the waiver associated fees with this is enough for our.
Have a motion in a second to waive those fees. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, thank you for that reminder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item on our agenda are reports and recommendations from the planning board and the planning director. Michael, let's do it here.
So I'm happy to go into any of these in more detail, but I just want to point to a few. The strategic work plan for the Department of the Septic Health Division for the next fiscal year, this is something that was discussed between the planning board members and staff and the board back in January. And it took some time, given some delays associated with the pandemic, but we were able to develop this and have a discussion with the planning board, and they did recommend the plan that I've attached with one addition, which would be an electric vehicle action plan that we added to the next fiscal year. Obviously, things, circumstances have changed quite a bit since we began drafting this plan, but I do believe that we can make inroads on a lot of these projects. Some of them may be delayed or extended, but I think, you know, if we do not see funding for many of these, we can make progress on the, on the staff side, but we are also pursuing funding, grants and other alternatives for several of these. We currently have over two hundred thousand dollars in grant applications pending for the Astrian Shoreline Master Plan, the emergency operations plan, I believe we have seventy or seventy-five thousand dollars in grants that are still active for that, and there's a few other projects that we, or a few other grant opportunities that we're looking forward to applying for. But I think hopefully the board was able to look at the work plan, but also look at the memo to the planning board, and we built this work plan into our budget narratives and performance indicators that I believe the board has been provided with. And I think it's a good way to focus staff, but also focus the work for planning board, hopefully something acceptable to the board. Beyond that, the hazard mitigation plan update, there's been some delays or at least delays in the FEMA review of that plan, so what many communities in the county and both Kirk and their county are doing is going ahead and adopting that. That's something I would expect to bring to the board July, a resolution for adoption of that plan. Link is in my report if you want to look at that. We did have two planning board members that served on the committee for that plan, Megan Lambert and me, Quinn, and we'll have the plan come before the planning board's their next meeting, June fourth, before his July first meeting, to review and make a recommendation on that as well. But essentially, we would be adopting it prior to FEMA's final approval of that plan. And there's good reasons to do that because it does, our current plan doesn't expire on June eleventh, that won't necessarily affect us in the short term, but as we start to get closer to September, October, C R S update, our C R S review for, for the NFIP program, but also when we start to get into more into hurricane season. Happy to go into any of these. What you probably saw is that I did pull in all of our active projects from our work plan into where now. Okay, I did just get out all the work.
Thanks. Board members? Michael, I want to ask about one thing that's, it's not strictly part of your work plan, it just, it occurs to me as, thinking about the work that y'all are doing. We had a little bit of an exchange about autonomous electric vehicles for the beach ride, that was, they will possibly prevent these states.
Yeah.
Is that still in play or?
It is, and let me see if I didn't give you an update. Well, it is actually, there's an update under the grants assistance.
Okay.
It's actually the last bullet. So N C D O T has a project called CASI, C A S S I, Autonomous Shuttle, and it's a pilot program, and they've been testing it or have tested it recently on N C State's campus and are opening it up to communities throughout the state, and the application period was recently extended from May into June. And we are, we've actually had a great conversation with them. They've also had some other local interests, and there may or may not be an opportunity for partnership, there may or may not be an opportunity where the town can submit a successful application. There are a lot of standards in terms of the condition by which they would consider the community in terms of speed limit, for presence of some curbing, protected turn of movement at intersections and things like that, and even storage. But it is something we're looking at, I believe, the time period that they would look to deploy or we wouldn't even be eligible to be sometime April through June of next year. But it's something we intend to submit an application forward and give the board an update when we, when we do that.
Thanks.
Yes, please.
Michael, a question, for our lady's plan that we presented, have we received any confirmation?
Not yet. I actually emailed the reviewer last week and she responded to that they were still reviewing. She did confirm that they didn't need any additional information from us, I don't know that that won't, that their review still won't result in a request for that information.
Did she give you a timeframe? Thank you, Ms. Van.
How to do that?
Board members, any other questions? Thank you, Michael. You're going to be up again. Next item on our agenda is old business items table from the previous meeting, the first being the flood ordinance.
Let me see if I can do a screen share then. Coming back to you again with the updated flood ordinance in concert with the update of the flood maps, the firm flood insurance rate maps for the town, for the county, but the town being included in that, obviously. Right of the board with the memo and some information, seems like much of the discussion at the last meeting started, circled around the proposed L E S, the staff proposing a local elevation standard of ten feet, really talking west of Twelfth and Twelve Forty-Three versus an eight foot local elevation standard that at least the county and every municipality, with the exception of Duck, has adopted. And we obviously heard support for an eight foot versus a ten foot L E S from the home builders, but also the local realtors. And then it also circled around or concerned lateral additions and the limit that we suggested on lateral additions, and this would be for lateral additions that are located within X zones on the proposed map. So what we've done is proposed a, essentially an exemption for those properties that have area, habitable area currently that would be below the new ten foot local elevation standard, that would essentially allow for that area to be extended laterally by up to twenty-five percent of the area of that space, not the total area, the structure of the area below the ten foot local elevation standard. And I believe you, you heard again from the home builders, but also the realtors, that they would prefer that that twenty-five percent cap not exist, that those, that floor area, that lateral addition be limited by lock coverage singularly. And so I'll go over these two points at least briefly. I think we had a whole presentation at the last meeting, and I think hopefully we at least aired all of our perspectives on this, but I'll try to sum those up. So we also provided to you, going all the way down to the bottom here, a couple of examples. There was some discussion about the effect of the proposed L E S in relationship to the current A E and the effect on, or the change or perceived change with respect to reference level. So essentially, the proposed L E S of ten is equivalent to a current A E of nine, and at present, the majority of the town is actually in an A E ten, and coming in as a close second is the area that's in A E nine. Of course, and this has really been talking about the west side, everything west of Twelfth and Twelve Forty-Three, we have zones that are A E eight, A E nine, A E ten and A E eleven, and obviously some P E zones along the causeway. And those A E zones, those elevations are going away, and the majority of these properties are moving into an X zone. And I think the concern is, obviously, that's been shared at least on occasion since twenty sixteen, since these proposed maps have come out, is whether or not the proposed maps are an accurate reflection of susceptibility to flooding, and whether or not we did not need to propose some regulations that were above and beyond what the maps proposed, that at least, and the staff, the staff's understanding of the intent, proposed regulations that are equivalent to current regulations. So again, the L E S of ten, we believe, is roughly equivalent to the A E of nine. It does result in a reduction in some cases, but it also is equally as stringent in, I believe, the majority of cases, or closely thereto. An A E of eight would be equivalent to a, excuse me, an L E S of eight would essentially be equivalent to an A E seven, which there are no locations in town that are in an A E seven. I mentioned, we do have some A E, A E properties along the west side of Soundside Road and then extending up towards Kilburn Hills North. There are approximately twenty properties that are in the A E zone. Again, an A E eight would be equivalent to an L E S of nine. So this is really why, you know, we looked at the geographic conditions of the town, we looked at flooding conditions in the town, but we also really focused on what are the regulatory conditions? And if the intent was, or the presumption was that the proposed maps were flawed in a way, and we wanted to at least have it equal regulatory protection as we have today, then I think that's why we settled on proposing an L E S of ten. There was some discussion at the last meeting about why we were proposing a ten when the other communities were looking at an eight. And perhaps, and I don't, I don't think this is for me to determine, but perhaps an L E S of eight is more appropriate in those communities given their regulatory conditions today. Notable that I believe only Kitty Hawk has an A E ten, none of the other communities have an A E ten, not speaking about unincorporated Dare County because I only looked at municipalities. And Kitty Hawk only has a small portion of A E ten, not nearly as large as the town of Nagfet. None of the other communities between Duck, Southern Shores, Kitty Hawk and Kilburn Hills have an A E eleven, or any P E zones on the west side of Twelfth. So it's not necessarily an apples to apples comparison, and I can understand, you know, maybe why, you know, I can understand the perspective that some parity or consistency is important, but I also want to make sure that we're adopting or we're proposing a regulation that is responsive to the needs of the town. I think that's why we settled on recommending an L E S of ten. Certainly, you could consider more stringent regulations in terms of a greater L E S or a limit on, a further limit on lateral additions, or you could propose less stringent regulations with respect to either of those. It's an option. Again, our intent was to try to be as consistent with current regulations as possible. Again, our intent was to try to be as consistent with current regulations as possible. Maybe the final slide I'll leave you with is a comparison between the current AE 10 and the proposed LES of 10, which does result in approximately a 12-inch, in most cases, a 12-inch reduction from the current. But I think the important thing, and again, this came up at the last meeting, where the reference level is established. And yes, it is correct that under the current regulations, under the current flood ordinance regulations, the reference level is defined as being the top of the floor. However, there's inconsistency between that regulation and what the building code would allow, and the building code would actually not allow for that to be the case. The building code, and Corey Tate should be available on Zoom if the board has any questions about this. But under the building code, the reference level, or really flood proofed or flood materials that are, that are safe from flooding would not be, would be allowed to be used below the reference level, but under the building code, some of those materials and some of that proofing, especially with respect to residential, is not possible. So it essentially results in that floor system and those elements being raised to the RFP, above the RFP. So you essentially have a functional equivalent under how it's administered today and how it's defined and administered under the proposed LES, and that's really related to the relationship between the ordinance and the building code. So again, Corey Tate would be available for any questions on that. Holly White knew the majority of the work, at least drafting the ordinance is available. And Kelly Wyatt is available if we need any questions about how it's administered in terms of permitting. And then David Ryan, town engineer, is also available in case there are any questions about maybe some of the flooding events or some of the technical aspects.
Will you go to address lateral additions in the order?
I can speak to it a little more in terms, if there are maybe specific questions, but in terms of the lateral additions, to clarify again, we're talking about existing finished area in post-firm structures. So structures that were constructed, and Holly will be only be able to tell me what the date is, I believe it's 1972, a date in 1972. Beyond that would be post-firm, meaning more recent. If there's an existing finished space below the 10-foot LES, you could expand that space. And it's important to clarify, you couldn't do that today. If you had that area below the base flood elevation today, you would not be able to expand it. We're allowing you to expand it now that that property, for those properties in the X zone, we're allowing you to expand it up to 25%. I think the concern is, and the reason why we are proposing that 25% limit, is because these are properties that today are regulated because they're susceptible to flooding. These are properties that are in fact susceptible to flooding. And without a regulation, we would be concerned that we were allowing people to create additional floor area, make additional investment into properties that might be susceptible to flooding because it's below that established LES. We have a reasonable expectation that these are properties that are potentially susceptible to flooding. And, you know, I think, obviously, there's a decision in terms of whether or not we want applicants, property owners, to make that decision on their own without regulating it, whether it's maybe a step too far for the town to tell someone they can't do that because we already have a lock coverage limitation. But we believe that, I believe there's less than 700, more than 600 properties that would be subject to this potential allowance. Not all of them would be. Some of them may be max on a lock coverage, some of them may have other limitations. But it's a number that does open up some exposure in terms of property owners. But depending on the nature of a flooding event, we could see some widespread damages because everyone took this option. And I think we allow for a reasonable expansion of that area, 25%, I think. Board was asking, or did ask, why we settled down on that number? And I think ultimately, the best explanation is we felt like it was reasonable recognizing that today, most of those could not do expansion. We did talk about creating a maximum square footage, so maybe it would be 25% or 300 square feet, 400 square feet, 500 square feet, whichever is greater. Does it create more exposure perhaps, but maybe it at least defines what someone can reasonably do. Beyond that, we don't prohibit lateral addition. Someone would just need to elevate that addition above the 10-foot, above the LES, and then they could maximize lock coverage. I know we had noted that in our previous memo, but I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that no one is precluding, or this ordinance doesn't preclude someone from making a lateral addition, they have just needed to elevate it, if they go beyond the limits that we proposed.
Difference in what staff's position is and the home builder's position is on that?
Sure. It's my understanding the home builders wish there to be, to allow for the exemption, to allow for existing finished space below the LES to be expanded when it's in the X zone, but to allow lock coverage to control, 30 or 33% generally. And we presented some images, you know, in some cases, and not every case, but in some cases, we're talking, that's allowed for the 1,000, 1,200, I think, and basically presented square feet of new floor area to be added. That may or may not happen. You know, someone would have to weigh the impacts of septic, parking needs, those that may reduce their, allow the lock coverage, but I think we would be concerned about sizable additions that are below that LES.
Any other questions for Michael?
From my point of view, having done work in the town for almost about 30 years, I think staff's done a good job with the 10-foot elevation. I mean, I understand the rationale for that. I understand that there are some properties in an AE 8 that will be penalized by that standard, but it's a relatively small number and they have found a number, I think, penalized as the least number of properties established as a reasonable standard. I think I may have said I'm ambivalent about lateral addition part. I understand staff's position. I also understand the thought that, you know, lock coverage, septic, and parking requirements may go over that adequately enough. That may be something that we reasonably resolved to do, which that that provision would simply go away because we already have lock coverage. Look, so.
I would also like to thank Michael and the planning staff for the work they put into this. I know it's been a long process and I just appreciate that. Just some clarifications. When these flat flood maps are adopted, we have these maps for 10, 12, 15 years that accuracy could be generally.
Maps, but zoning regs can change at any time.
That's my comment. We have the maps, we can, we adopt something today, next year or two years from now, we can go back and make it less stringent, more stringent. We can change. I just want to, you know, to verify that. When I look at the 25%, I think we're, I don't like the idea that we're further restricting property owners. Michael presented, or mentioned a case of 1,200 square feet, I think that's to the extreme. And he even made motion, or made mention of that. My opinion, I think the lock coverage should take that. As far as the LES, still not wrapping my head around 10 feet, how we came to that. It is just an arbitrary number. I like being consistent, or try to be consistent with the other areas. But I'm up into discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'm going to be repetitive. Okay, if we adjure, if we reset to the next meeting, we can vote on this at the next meeting, we've got to adopt the mask by the 13th, so we just know that. Can we adopt the maps today without doing?
And I think the best...
Right.
Thank you, Ian.
So I think, back to the question, you're not adopting the maps, and since the maps are adopted for the town, municipalities, for the county, and their effects at June 19th, we're adopting an ordinance that would be consistent with those regulations to a minimum degree and do have the ability to adopt more stringent regulations. If you were to take a vote today that did not result in a supermajority, now that these four affirmative votes, then it would require a second reading, and that would be the same with respect to future meetings as well. So that's maybe the only caution. And I did want to clarify, my staff sent me a mention about the county's requirement for lateral additions. What their requirement is, is that a lateral addition, when we're in the X zone under the proposed maps, that the addition has to be elevated to the BFE, the base flood elevation, in effect today. So if you have a structure that has a ground floor enclosure that is at an 8, but the BFE was 9, then they would have to elevate that. So that is, it is an important distinction in that.
How many?
I believe, we believe that was adopted by the county, Kilblen Hills and Southern Shores. Duck, as far as I know, is the only community that has adopted the 10-foot LES, but also the 25% limitation cap.
You sure they adopted the 25%? My understanding is they didn't adopt.
I can try to confirm that.
They didn't restrict the...
Lateral addition.
Yeah.
I can try to confirm what they adopted.
Not to be redundant, but just exactly what Mr. Frankly said, I pretty much agree with. The lateral addition, I think, should be allowed as presented by the home builders, and that the lock coverage should be the governing factor. As far as the elevation, sort of like mentioned briefly again, I, I don't know enough to be able to adequately say what I think is right. I tend to want to give the homeowner the best break we can give him and not regulate him as restrictively. So that's my value, but I don't know which that number is.
So I noticed something he said the first time, or I noticed the first time today that he said that this is regulating, this is regulating post-firm houses. And did we do a study or did we not do a study on how many post-firm houses are items that could be in a dangerous flood zone if they were allowed more lateral, you know, expansion of their property? Because a lot of these post-firm were in an X zone at one time that got put into, my house example, it was in an X zone, it got put into an AE 9 zone and may go back to an X zone, may not go back to an X zone. So in those, and it's according to every homeowner that has long enough to been there since houses, though, never had water around. So to what extent was the study done to us to develop a 10-foot LES, where my understanding is the home builders have put engineering on to where they came up with the county LES, and where they came up with the other community LES? I know you're on 10, I was on 8, you know, and it suggested maybe we go to a 9 to be in the middle because it still will be 10. And we're only talking basically post-firm, because any pre-firm, which we have a ton of in exit, wouldn't be regulated the same way as this anyway. Be redundant with those two on the lateral.
Um, I don't think the town did, our judge of not challenging them, that's worrying the town right now. I do think it's 25% of the...
So the other thing to consider is that if you do certain things to structures, certain additions, even making your home safer, once you move it or once you do this thing, your flood insurance rates change. You're no longer grandfathered in. Rates go from like $500 to upwards of $3,500 for the same house. Because once you approve it, anyone penalizes you for doing that. So there's lots of things that people are going to have to take a look at. Hopefully, they look at it holistically, not just one certain segment. So I am totally for block coverage. I have a concern about the LES of 10. I think we've probably taken, there's other things people can do to homes such as floodproofing and different things that would make them qualify, building codes and so forth. I think 10 may be a little bit extreme for us. Eight may be too low. I guess it's kind of like three bears, if you want in the middle maybe, or the three little pigs, one or bear, I'm not sure. But whatever the board wants to do, the majority will, you know, allow it. But I would throw a nine out as a middle round perhaps. That would be 10.
Okay. I'll just, sure, I'm convinced on nine.
I'd like to see us take action sooner rather than wait till the last.
Well, I must suggest, I have a sort of poll for all of you, so I don't know if you're going to vote. I'm not going to vote for LES of less than 10 today. So we probably, we may need two votes. I mean, you all four may be in favor today. I'll lean if you propose to lean, and that's fine. Go with that. If anybody else has, if anybody else has reservations about that, then we may need that second vote. So we probably should go ahead and take a vote on this today. If everybody's willing, if everybody's willing to put a motion forward.
May I ask procedural question of the attorney?
Yes.
If we take a vote today and it doesn't pass and we recess to the next meeting, can we take a vote at that meeting, which is a continuation of this meeting? So it'd be the same vote at the same meeting?
You, I believe you can because it is on a separate day, even though it's considered to be the same meeting. The requirement that you're referring to comes from the statute regarding voting on these kinds of ordinance amendments. A vote today, even that does not mean a supermajority, really is necessary in order for a majority vote and later to constitute final action. Voting the table, apparently, according to the school of government's opinion, is not enough to count as a first consideration of the ordinance.
There is one other alternative. Depending on how a vote turns out, there can always be a motion to reconsider. I'm not, that's a correct decision.
Good.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you further expound on your thought process of 10 for us on the board to understand a little bit?
Yeah. Well, I mean, they, staff did look at the town and the number of structures that would be affected. And the, if the regulatory elevation is 10 feet, then all of the untreated framing, ductwork, everything that's not treated lumber has to be at or above that 10-foot elevation. That's the same way you would treat it if it were nine feet plus one foot freeboard to that. If you were on a nine and you add the one foot of freeboard, then that, then that 10 is the bottom of all untreated lumber or all ductwork or anything else. So it, the LES of 10 is effectively nine plus the one foot of freeboard. As I understood it, the nine plus the one foot of freeboard, you know, the vast majority of structures in the town would meet that standard. Other than the few that are at eight, that are up at the north end of town, they currently would be able to build to eight plus one, which is 10. So they're going to be a foot below the, they're going to be a foot below the standard and they're going to be, those, those houses will essentially be prohibited from expanding.
What you're saying is every house is prohibited from expanding. They're all below the LES of 10, so they're all prohibited from expanding to that point unless we pass the lateral of whatever we do.
All the ones that were, that were legally built in a nine with a one foot of freeboard would mean they're 10 standard.
How many of they? And the other question to me is how many of the houses that would be at nine have ever had water into their untreated floor space? And we can't see into the future, so if that ever happened, I don't think that our concern is going to be that house. I think our concern is going to be the outer banks.
Michael? So I may question, how many, how many properties are in the A9 today?
Essentially, because they would all have to be at nine plus one.
Sure. Bear with me one second.
We had a slide, there was a slide at some point.
So I may question, how many, how many properties are in the A9 today?
Essentially, because they would all have to be at nine plus one.
Sure. Bear with me one second.
We had a slide, there was a slide at some point.
So currently, there are 952 structures in the town that are in the A9. And there are 1,276 that are in the 10. Going back to the last presentation, there are approximately 174 structures that would be made non-conforming by an LES of 10.
Okay, that was the, that was the number I was thinking. Hundred and four, 174.
Yes, sir.
Structures that are currently conforming would be made non-conforming by the 10.
No, that, so, sorry. Yeah, sorry, I apologize. There are currently 1,004 existing non-conforming structures and there would be an additional 174.
I'm sorry, okay, so an additional 174.
They're non-conforming just based on that, not for any other reason?
Correct. That's, that's correct. Those, there could be other non-conforming conditions.
But we didn't separate that.
We, we wouldn't have the ability to do that if some data.
Maybe 10 to nine, those 174 would be conforming or some of those still not conforming.
We don't know because we're not separating non-conforming issues beyond the fact that elevation. And we all know there's other non-conforming issues.
Presumably, that's correct. By going from an LES of 10 to an LES of nine, you lower the number of non-conforming structures that create, but you, and I, and this is what I talked about in my memo, you maybe broaden the, the number of structures that you're regulating by stringent.
Can you, do you know how many of those in the A9 have had significant damage or flooding in the last 20 years?
I, no, sir. And I did want to add, Commissioner Sears was correct, Doug did not adopt the 25% level of addition. Apologize.
And what, what elevation did Doug adopt?
And overall, Doug has larger area of 10 in there. So most of them are not going to a non-conforming issue because most of Doug is elevated higher, except for the two water pump sections, mostly on the west side.
So, one minute. I make the motion that we give away 25% of the standard of block coverage.
Question in a second to eliminate the 25% standard, let block coverage govern, which we would not add a provision, we would, Michael, we would simply strike that provision of 25%.
So this is under 11.44.2.7.9.2, page 25 of 40 of the ordinance. I can share my screen, I'll bring it up. So this is the applicable provision located west of NC 12 and S R 1243 for the reference level of existing condition, temperature-controlled spaces, let's get below the RFP, such space may be elevated, excuse me, may be increased by 25% at the same level without having to be elevated to or above the RFP. Bear with me one second. So few options. What, what Dare County and I believe Kitty Hawk and Kelso River and Southern Shores and maybe presumably Doug, but I don't know this, they adopted a provision that said lateral additions to existing structures shall have the reference level elevated to or above the RFP that was applicable at the time of the original construction of the structure. If you want to stick with our, you know, the framework of our language here, you could strike by 25% and just say such space may be increased at the same level without having to be elevated to or above the RFP.
I'm 10. One second, sir. Still believe governed by block coverage without having that in the provision.
Correct. You would, yeah, I mean, all the rest of the ordinance still applies.
You would essentially strike by 25%.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question regarding motion? Is the motion to approve the, the ordinance as presented with that provision?
No.
It was not for the whole ordinance, it was only given with that certain provision. So your, so your motion is to have the proposed ordinance revise what clued that, what got adopted in the ordinance itself?
And then I would, then if that passes, then we would go to consideration of the full ordinance with that. Is there an idea another?
Just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Okay, right.
I think we are.
Okay, yes. Did that already get a second? Okay. Any further discussion on that? I think everybody was, before, you're all on the same page of that, so anyway.
Maybe easy.
Yeah. I understand that. Well, the next part may be easy too. Depends on what the board. Hearing no discussion, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, we will consider the full ordinance modified with at or by 25% having been struck Next consideration is, is it adopted with the RFP of 10 or does that number change?
Question. Earlier, anything you did can be changed, see how it works for them.
It's, it's their ordinance now, so, yes.
It does not affect flood maps, it just affects.
That's correct. So we can come back to that.
And how it didn't work, you know, have opportunity.
That is, that is correct. So we could, if you wished, the, the way to test that unfortunately is to set the lower standard as the, load it on today and then if it doesn't work, move it up. Move it up, you'll never know whether you got it too hard.
You may never know it none. Have they kept it at eight and had a sound one?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. It's all right.
They've, I don't know.
Yep. Make the motion for a proper update.
I'll make the motion to adopt the ordinance with the change to the elevation of nine.
Second, a second for that. Further discussion, we've been around this for a while and I think that we're kind of feeling our way through this. Staff has presented their rationale and we questioned that and looked at what the other towns were doing. So, and as the point is, the point's well taken that this is our ordinance at this point that it can be changed fairly readily.
I wrestle with this. I want to say I appreciate staff's work. I think it was, was good. Part of staff's job to look at things more from a theoretical, this is how we think it should be kind of thing. And part of our job is to kind of try to be more pragmatic, hopefully, and understand the effect of how this meant for, for or against our citizen we represent. And that's why I said I was wrestling with it to begin with. And I think, I think nine is a good number. I really do.
Well, if, that when we get back into having actual meetings.
Well, if, that when we get back into having actual meetings and not just all video stuff, but we still have the builders coming to make the presentation to us on that. So that we can have. I appreciate all the work that's done. I think they've done an awful lot. They've given us, given us an awful lot of, of stuff to consider, an awful lot of graphics as well. I'm sure we'll do what you want.
This is probably technically one of the hardest things towns have struggled with. It's a, a big issue because it affects a lot of properties. Part to know, you know, and yes, staff dealt with the data. Did due diligence as planners, which is what you expect them to do. And, yeah. Good call. Any further discussion?
And I just want clarification, this is a record. This would be the, the L S of 9 instead of 10, or solely west of 12 and 1243.
Yes. Yes, thank you for that clarification, yes. That's where the discussion has been. Yes, that's correct. The motion is to adopt the ordinance with the reference elevation of 9 west of NC 12 and 1243. And that's the second. Any further discussion, Tim? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes with a supermajority.
Anyways.
So, let's take a, about a 10-minute break. As the board is back in session, the next item on our agenda is item G2, which is a, the scope of work for Moffitt and Nickel on beach nourishment. Good, you finish it?
I think Andy's going to talk.
Andy, sorry. Thanks, Andy.
All right. So last month, the board discussed this item, the scope of work for Moffitt and Nickel, and also for McKimmon Creed, Moffitt and Nickel to perform coastal engineering services for the town, and McKimmon Creed to perform the beach surveying services. Your joint lead, your mission, my John Arno, Moffitt and Nickel, and Boyner. So basically in your packet, you have two separate memorandums, proposals from the two firms. The first is for Moffitt and Nickel for the coastal engineering. It's broken down into four tasks. The task one is basically to perform the beach monitoring and maintenance plan, essentially analyzing the data that was collected by surveyor and providing that to us in an annual report that we get to monitor for beach condition. That's listed as task one in their scope. Task two is to perform essentially a phase one of a master plan for beach engineering and modeling services. And it's a pretty extensive project that we've discussed doing over the next five years. We're looking more of a long-term approach to beach nourishment and shoreline management. So this essentially represents the first phase of that. And I think what we're trying to do this year is get the board to appoint or to make some decisions next spring with some new data and sort of a new, new look at this from, from a different angle, different lens on what's happening with our beaches. And the board may end up having more discussions about how to fund the next project and this will certainly help us sort of drill down into that. There's a small task in Moffitt and Nickel, scope task three, which is assistance with a grant application that you've already discussed to basically request funds from the state to supplement beach nourishment that we might do related to Hurricane Dorian damage. That's a fairly small item. And task four is not something we're asking the board to consider today, but we wanted to show that to the board. Essentially that is assistance with Hurricane Dorian FEMA project. And I think we've got all the services we need to implement that project. We don't really need the board to consider that today. We were waiting for FEMA to essentially obligate the money. And that task four item would be FEMA reimbursable. So even though, you know, we'd hit our budget ordinance, it's something that we could request reimbursement for. And that's obviously the biggest ticket item we're showing you today. So essentially, we're asking the board to approve tasks one through three from Moffitt and Nickel. Separate proposal you received from McKimmon Creed looks at surveying services essentially just for this year. Breaks the beach down into transects. I think you have 126 transects that we've been collecting over the years in our previous work. And they're looking to add some additional transects north and south of the project area and, and some transects in between from ones we've been collecting. We've been collecting those 500-foot intervals. They wanted to really look at, I think, reaches three and four in more detail and sort of determine what they think is happening in those areas. So they proposed adding transects in that area to give the town some additional detail. And then that information would be put into the model that they plan to develop. And so, we had recommended looking at a base amount of 47,000, but adding in those additional transects, I think it puts that in surveying scope up to about 63,000. So we're essentially asking the board to consider separate authorization for 63,000 for the surveying work. Question, Commissioner Ford?
What's the point of the options?
So the options, we had a base amount, which is the 126 transects that we've been collecting survey data for ever since we started doing the nourishment. And that's basically to continue to be able to compare apples to apples with previous day we collected. And then the options are to add additional transects. Some of those would be north of the project area, some would be south of the project area. And then also supplementing in reaches three and four some additional transects to sort of refine the analysis there and then look a little closer at what might be happening with the erosion of those areas. And that helps them with their modeling efforts. And as you have Johnny and Brian here, they can certainly get into that a little bit more technically.
Let, let me rephrase my question. Why would we be doing extra surveys on park service property at our expense?
Well, I think that what's being proposed is to, to feed into the models because a lot of times we really want to start looking at what's happening north and south of the project area. We start looking at longshore, they're in the sand and so forth. And again, I'd really like them to be able to answer why they would want that data for the model. And the question about whether we should be paying for a survey on the park service property, it was a separate question that they wouldn't necessarily answer, but it would help us to try and refine our modeling.
Well.
I think of the answer.
And again, they can answer that question, but the, the sand goes away faster at the south end of the project. And if we don't survey south of the project, we don't know to what extent the sand migrated south of the project or whether it went offshore to a bar or what happened to it. And we can partly find out what happened to it, which may help explain the dynamics of what's happening there and what we need to change. And if they haven't worked, where would it?
Then it would just be, why wouldn't we just do option one?
This is Johnny. I'll jump in there real quick. You know, what we did web was to kind of look back at all the old data and kind of, and was looking to see how the different transects changed over time and if they were kind of consistent, you know, between surveys or, you know, some of the behavior was the same, we felt like, okay, well, that's probably enough information for us to really kind of determine how much is being lost onshore, offshore, which, and how much is being lost alongshore. So as, you know, Andy said, what we saw was that, you know, when you start going there to the south end, which has historically been the hotspot, you know, we saw these big changes even in sections that were only 500 feet apart. And then, you know, there's such a wide spacing, you know, normally within most of the town, it's 500 feet. But then when you got down to the, the park service property, you know, the, it got to like 3,000-foot spacing. So it's really, that's not enough information for us to really kind of be able to see really what's going on and how much is maybe going along the shore versus onshore, offshore. So, you know, in order for us to really try to get a sense of what's happening down there and then also looking at what kind of alternatives we might look at to help that material stay there longer, we just feel like that, that information would be very helpful in us sort of looking at that area and also then potentially coming up with potential solutions. So, you know, we understand that, but when we, we understand your concern there, but the reason we were proposing it is just so that, you know, we could get that better understanding of that hotspot and in a sense really how much is being lost onshore, offshore versus how much is being transported down drift because at 3,000-foot spacings, it's just, it just gets washed out into noise, if that makes sense.
Thanks, John.
I would also like to endorse that concept because I think this could help us in the long game as to what's happening not just in South Nagshead, but Park Service. And it could possibly grow to our benefit in the future, maybe form partnership, do some projects.
I totally agree. I think what we have done in the past was when we first approached the park service about allowing the taper to go on park service property, their answer was no. And so therefore the taper starts at the southern end of Nagshead and then goes up a quarter of a mile. So I believe that there's a different value at the park service where now we can take a project down to our thriving line and hopefully partnership with the park service to do the taper in there and help protect actually some of their infrastructure that, that's.
Their housing, that's right. I think we stand a much better chance with leadership that's there, that's more open minded and looking at the long term, not just the short term, no, no, no. And I just think anything we can do to improve communication as well as information flow can only help.
At, at your last meeting, the superintendent gave a presentation and he mentioned beach nourishment, doing a or plan, trying to figure out where they are. They, they hired V H D who we're familiar with, the Right Plant. I, I reached out to superintendent to see if surveying was part of that plan. And right now they're just right, right in the plant. But we can certainly engage half park service, drive, create this as a partnership. And that's what the right, I do believe, the next project could very well see the taper go further south.
So, obviously if there's any other questions, myself or any of the folks that are joining us can answer those. But essentially we would ask the board for two motions. I believe one motion was to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Moffitt and Nickel not to exceed 279,400 dollars. And then the second motion would be authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with McKimmon Creed not to exceed 63,100 dollars for beach surveying services.
Before we go to further discussion, I did have a question. On the McKimmon Creed proposal, the post-storm surveys, are they always reimbursable or sometimes reimbursing?
Well, I think they're reimbursable if we give a disaster declaration and, and apply for funds for that.
Thank you. Fourth, discussion? Questions?
See why we would survey park service property, but I appreciate the explanation that was given. It helped me. And I agree with that. So that helped me out a lot.
Thank you. It will be nice to hear fresh thoughts about, you know, long-term plan. Multi, multi-decade beach nourishment master plan. I think will be hugely beneficial to us to be able to think about this and how it's financed going forward. Hearing no discussion, an order, a, a motion first would be in order on authorizing the manager to enter into a contract with Moffitt and Nickel for the amount not to exceed 977 or 11?
79,400.
Okay, thank you.
I make the motion that we authorize the town manager to execute a professional service contract with McKimmon Creed totaling 631, 100 and with Moffitt and Nickel totaling 27, 279 and 499. Can they be done together or separate?
I think they can be done together.
That would be my motion.
Right. Thank you. So I have a motion and a second to authorize the manager of both of these contracts in one motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Continuing under old business, we have two items that are being continued, which will then bring us to new business, and that would be committee reports. Anyone have a committee report? For that?
Jeanette Spears, ready to open, preparing to open, but as of the last contact, they don't have a specific date. Mike Rimmich did report that he understood that the tier, their part of it would be able to open before the inquiry.
Yeah, that, that one, too.
Right.
Thank you. From, the control group is not there again. So, yes, we may not, but something arises that would cost us to do so. Mr. Wyden, we, and we. I'm sorry. The town manager, and that would be the recipient.
Thank you. At your last meet, passed the motion to direct staff to come back with three items as they relate to recycling. The first would be to facilitate a subscription for a curbside recycling service, similar to what we had in place early on and similar to what some of the other towns in the county are doing. Second one was to develop an information campaign to help further describe the decision-making process to how we got to where we are today. And then the third was to develop a, a program to better educate and encourage the citizens, visitors, residents, encourage production, reuse, recycling. First, I wanted to tell you, the first one, it, I reached out to four potential vendors for this subscription program. Bay Disposal, Tidewater Fiber, Waste Management and Waste Industries. We are in communication with Bay Disposal. The, the parameters at which we've requested this subscription service are pretty broad. We've asked for them to use their can and we've left up, left it up to them to determine the day of service. The reason for their can is just too confusing now that the blue cans are not being used for recycling to be able to determine who has subscribed and who has not when those cans are out. I think that the day, we have to be somewhat open to the day because they have to factor it into their work, business plan and work model. What, what they has primarily discussed early on is looking at at least 300 to subscribe. We've, and they're, they're considering this. They haven't committed yet, but we'll continue to work with them. We can provide, we can hold the list of the 300 and then provide that to them and then they would contact the subscriber to set up the account. We've, we've volunteered to help with the. We've volunteered to help with the dissemination of their carts if that helps, if that helps facilitate, then we can use our staff to deliver the carts. So, and I have not heard back from Waste Management or Waste Industries, but Tidewater Fiber has gotten back to me and indicated that they're discussing it internally and how they might be able to offer this service to us. So I don't have much more to report other than I'm hopeful that we'll be able to put this subscription program in place sooner rather than later, but it's likely going to take some time.
Thank you.
Any questions on that part, you want?
One point, then a question, or well, I'll ask this first. I personally would like to try to push hard and get staff to move quickly and set up a program as quickly as possible and not lose what the minimum, we've already lost some momentum, but not lose any more momentum on trying to do something. And with that, you know, I think we could be a little bit more aggressive as a municipality in trying to set up that facilitating part by sending out information about here's what you can do, or, you know, get the word out, just get the word out. And then if a citizen calls the town and says, I want to continue recycling, there should be somebody that can answer the phone and says, A, B, C, D. This is where we are. What we're doing, this is when we inspect things, et cetera, et cetera. That's kind of where I'm coming from to not lose that momentum. And then the other, and it's in the memo and I saw it on our website, but I really want to, want to question something. It's a, while the budgetary conditions associated with COVID were a consideration in the decision to suspend the town's recycling service, on and on and on, I don't remember, at least I don't remember that we made the decision based on the COVID issue.
Well, you're right. I think it relates, the budget related issue related to that, one of the first things we mentioned, it was actually a special meeting, I believe, emergency meeting, we talked about the budget and we talked about the impact at that time, we thought it would be much more severe and we discussed things such as recycling as being one of the things we could consider when trying to put together a budget.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is as a board member, I've heard from citizenry that it said we've tried to place the blame on not having curbside recycling on COVID.
Yeah, that.
I did not do that.
No.
And I don't think this board did that, but that seems to be the cover. Did we discuss budgetary items and considerations about budget in relationship to recycling? Absolutely, but we do that with everything.
Yeah, it's the press release that we sent out on May 7th, discussed the other issues and reasons why, not just for the budget, but also because of the difficulties. And I could, I think it'd be good to go through this for the benefit of the public, but it also mentioned the issues surrounding recycling in and of itself. Going back to December of last year, when the, when we were notified that the Bay was no longer recycling, that they were incinerating, we had a decision to make then as to whether or not we were going, because our contract needed to be amended, as you recall, I believe it was at the January meeting, the 43, to write that letter to allow Bay Disposal to divert all of the material to an incinerator. And that letter was capable, that ability through the end of the fiscal year. The letter was dated, they could, and that because the board wanted to reevaluate. And then as part of that reevaluation, we were trying to find, and we know that we can continue to incinerate for waste and energy, but when we were trying to determine whether or not we could have a recycler, it became, it became a timing issue is that we weren't going to be able to put something in place to have the material recycled ahead of the tourist season. I think the way the staff looked at it was, it reached a point where you had to make a decision. If you went beyond that point, then it became very problematic to switch back. It became very problematic to engage the contractor, Bay Disposal, to do, to do the work. So you're absolutely right. It's not, it wasn't a COVID budget reason entirely. You'd think it was part of, but it wasn't. That was not the reason why.
I just encourage you and staff to separate COVID discussions from recycling because people have related, and even I think we had on our website about COVID-related budgetary considerations, taking recycling and people have taken that and said, we're using COVID as a cover, not to recycle.
Well, and I think it's also important to point out that you have canceled recycling. Right. And again, I think this is the reason why it was suspended and the board would want to reconsider this all was in hopes that, as I shared, that I was hopeful that Bay Disposal could work something out with the recycler, the new vendor, the new recycling company, where it would take us out of some of the problems of us engaging into a contract with the recycler and those things where we had concern about, you know, 18%, they were willing to give us 18% contamination. And at that time, to sign a contract, I couldn't recommend to you to sign a contract for that because I was, I was quite sure that our recycling loans are going to see greater than 18% contamination. And if that's the case, then we're going to pay $120 additional per tonne to dispose of the material. And we didn't want to do that. And then there were some other issues of problematic issues by having two separate contracts. Navy picks up, as you know, a lot of recycling on that event. And so there's co-mingled recycling in their pickup. There's some uphill hills, there's some man, there could be some accidents, recycling is one truck. So in order for us to account for our recycling, they would have had to have weighed ours separately because we were going to be billed separately. They was just going to haul it and then we were going to have to pay RDS for the tonnage. That was another problematic issue of this. Ken, I'd like to just kind of share because I think you're right. I think there is, there's this perception that we cut it just for the budget, but I didn't, so I'd like to put a timeline of how we've gotten to where we are and talk about some of those figures because the price we pay per tonnage for recycling is considerably higher than for trash and it has grown considerably from where we started. In April of 2011, we had their subscription program and then in May of 2014, we switched and did a pilot recycling program for the beach road. The idea being that we were going to capture the majority of our recycled tonnage off of 12 and 1243. So in January 2016, the town initiated its townwide curbside recycling service, which took place at the pilot program and the subscription program. Those days were Tuesday and Saturday for the beach road, we were paying $88,000 for collection. We were paying $0 for the tons we collect that we haul to Outback Common. In January of 2017, imported to, the town placed emphasis on, we wanted our trash and recycling by the hauler, by they, picked up on the same day because otherwise we were going to have trash cans and recycling cans out on the road almost every day for one of the others we picked up. And that, that was problematic. So we switched, at that point, we switched to Friday from Tuesday to Saturday. Cost was reduced to 77,980. And then January of 2019, that's when we combined Monday and Friday on the beach road. And they only picks up recycling on the beach road, May to October. But in order for us to realize that Monday, Friday, the cost went up to 195,000. And then at that time, we go from the material we pick up to not paying for that material to be tipped, to now being charged 70 per tonne for that to be tipped. And we collected 522 tonnes in fiscal year 19. So that's an additional cost of 36,540. Then of course, as I said, December of 19, we're notified that we're no longer recycling, materials going to wheel grader and being used for waste energy and the Navy is using part of that energy, not all, but the Navy was using part of that. We were told at that time we could continue to recycle, but it would be upwards of 130 per tonne. We could continue to incinerate for 70 a tonne. And then that's when the board wrote the letter to allow the contract to be amended through June 30 of this month so that they could divert the material to be incinerated. And that brings us to the spring to where we are now. We learned that RDS can process our recycling for 70 a tonne. The town would need two agreements, one for hauling and one for processing. The processing contract would require the town to pay an additional 121 dollars per tonne for contaminated loads. And that's kind of where it broke down. And that, then the mayor board temporarily suspended recycling program. I don't know, have this in your packet, I don't know if we can bring this up on the screen or not, but the savings, there's I think some misinformation about the savings because there's a thought that it's only, it's 7 dollars less a tonne to recycle. That, that's, that's true except that we're paying 195,000 to Outback Common to haul the material. And that, the material that they picked up on the beach road is included in that 195,000. So when the savings by no longer contract in Bay, we, we now have to pay 77 dollars a tonne for that 322 tonne. And we're only paying 7 more for the material that we collect. So it's not, it's not 7 dollars less for all the tonnage, actually in addition of 77 dollars for the tonnage spent. There are no longer picking up, it's going to go into the landfill and then an additional 7 dollars for us to carry recycling material that we were paying 70 for, we're now paying 77. All said, that savings comes out to 168,344. And there's a question about the cost of the recycling carts. We have spent a considerable amount of money for these recycling carts. Initially, we spent 221,626 on the carts, plus the grant for 30,000. So the town's got 191,626 in recycling carts. We've also, one thing I need some, maybe some direction on is just, we changed the town code to include recycling carts. And so for every, for every green, for every trash cart you need, you need recycling carts. So maximum amount of, a house, the maximum amount of bedrooms would need three recycling carts and three trash carts. We need to discuss, are we going to change the code now and then revisit that change should the town start recycling again? But, but we put an emphasis on recycling, put a strong emphasis on recycling and the board directed staff to make sure all the, particularly the rental homes had the carts they needed. So we purchased an additional 1,788 carts and we recouped, cost of that, we recouped 102,900 of that expense, but we still have 416 carts left. The, one thing I wanted to, if you could scroll back up, just to give you an idea of the cost increase in fiscal year 2017, the vendor collects 371 tonnes and that was on the beach road in 12, 1243, those, that tonnage was collected from May to October. Factor in at that time, the cost to haul, 221 dollars a tonne. And then the town, our cost to haul, 160,000 for the 446 tonnes we collected, that brings the tonnage we picked up to 360 dollars a tonne. 2019, recycling was costing us 297 dollars a tonne. Trash, it was costing 143 dollars a tonne. So, you know, lots happened since 2017, but the town, the state committed to recycling through this. In 2019, the figures jumped even more. If you just look at what we're paying Bay per tonnage, comes up to 604 dollars a tonne. Of course, that number, the more Bay picks up, that number goes down. But the cost per tonne that we pay Bay at 604 dollars, the cost of the material we picked up is 347. You put the two together, we're paying 439 dollars a tonne for recycling.
Can you scroll down? I'll be back up for a minute. That says, oh, nevermind, nevermind, sorry.
So again, you can see it's gone up by almost 140 dollars and then compared to the cost of trash, it's 157.
Cliff, can you clarify something along some of those figures? When you talk about cost to haul for the town of 160,650, what does that price?
That includes, that includes the fuel, the manpower and the cost of the equipment. You know, there's a cost to use the equipment. So it, it's in all encompassing, that, that's what it costs in town, regardless if you're hauling one tonne or a thousand tonnes. You know, that, that number will change, but the 160,000 is the cost. And that's based on the number of trips that we take, we took in that fiscal year to either, in that case, to curtail, to Outback Common.
So it's all inclusive, just everything for us to do it?
Yes, sir. And that, the same goes with the trash figure. Part of what staff is suggesting is that the board consider forming a committee and that committee could have two charges, you may have additional charges, but a committee to, to help you in recommendation and considering recycling after this year, after this, this summer season. I think the board is committed to revisiting and that committee could help do that. Also in this back of the third, the third thing that you asked for was a strong information education campaign for staff to educate visitors and guests and that committee could help do this as well.
That works.
That's helpful.
I, I, one more thing I do want to say, we, we, on, I think Commissioner Fuller makes a point that if someone calls and they want to know how they can recycle, we need to be able to tell them that we're, we're working on getting a subscription in place. Right now, we don't have that. If a citizen were to call Bay Disposal to try and sign up to get the service at their house, they, they wouldn't be able to do that. I think Bay would tell them the same thing we are, that they're, they're flicking into it. But I think those that call do need to know that, that we're flicking into it. And also we're, the, for all the co-mingle, the roll-off containers that we have here at Town Hall, we've asked and are going to put the same thing at 8th Street on, on Lark so that people will have two places to carry this material.
And that trailer's bucket horse will be outside the gate?
Yes, sir. It'll be outside, 24/7 available.
Because you're not getting inside the gate if you don't have a sticker.
Thank you, Cliff. I, I do think that the sooner we can get a portal open to start taking names for people who are interested in subscription service, the better. You know, we're back to your point about the, you know, the budget impact on this too. You know, we were, we were in a situation where, you know, as Cliff expressed, the timing, where we were trying to make a decision about what we were going to do. the timing, where we were trying to make a decision about what we were going to do for the summer and what we were going to do with the contract, and, and at that point, being in the extremely uncertain situation about what our revenues were going to be, that we did take a very conservative approach to our budget. And, you know, in my mind, you know, I go to that one-hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar savings that Cliff just acknowledged that is being rewired. And, you know, money's always an object, but sometimes when you have healthy revenues and you get to a difficult situation and you're trying to find your way through something, you know, a program where, and now you have questions about the quality of it, you may decide that, well, we'll spend some money on a program of questionable quality to keep it going, because we can foresee a better solution out there, and we're in a healthy financial position, and, and, and we can do this. Nobody was going to argue for that in this case. Nobody was going to argue for sort of putting something on life support for a period of time to try to feel our way through. That's where the, that's where the budget really rubbed up against it for, for me. So, two things, I, I do, I do agree that we should get that portal open, and two, I do, I do think that we have some number of people in the town for whom this is a, a big issue, and I do think, I think I've said it a few times, I think the education, the reduction, the reuse is an important component. I don't, I would like to see a group of interested citizens attack that issue, and not the group of citizens to argue for restoration of curbside recycling in the form that we have, but a group of citizens to do what, to describe as the charge here. I think that that could be helpful. So it's an outlook for.
Absolutely. It'd be appropriate for town clerk to put out a request for, for people to volunteer, and then we bring back a list and maybe formalize the charge for that committee? Or, I mean, how would I put that, form a committee?
That seems reasonable.
We kind of have a list between the mayor and I.
Yeah.
But we'd like to see if they volunteer.
Yes, would be good.
Mayor, just off of just a, just circle, proper comments. The information that's been provided, you and I have had hours of discussion about this, and I appreciate your time and the thought process in putting all this together. Going back on what Commissioner Fuller said, in the initial, right after we suspended it, if I remember correctly, correctly, the social media post did relate to the suspending of the program back to COVID. And much like he said, I, I don't think that was the intent there. I've asked each time we've talked to be transparent in all the information regards to recycling, the cost, overall cost, the breakdown cost, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. And I just hope that we can get these figures out to the public, for them to see, and, and let them delve into it and make out what they, you know, what they, take out what they want. We, we have almost two-hundred thousand dollars for carts that we've purchased. The additional purchase was one-hundred and three thousand, and we've sold one-hundred and two thousand. When I asked you on the phone, is there a possibility that some of those carts that were purchased have never even seen a recyclable material in them?
It's, yes. It, it's, if someone bought a cart on the beach road, on twelve, and, and we, we required the carts to be purchased.
Correct.
So that they could adhere with the town code. It is possible that that cart was, the house wasn't rented over the summer, and the cart wasn't used. I, I don't have any of those cases there, maybe, but it, it's theoretically possible.
No. I would just hope that we look at that to see, you know, we required people to purchase it, then we suspended the program, and they bought something that, well, they're not going to be used for recycling, that was purchased as a recycling cart. Again, I want the public to see this and hear this and let them process that.
Yeah, the, that question's come up internally in the directions I've given staff, and of course, I'll take your direction here, is that the, the, the program's been suspended. And if, if it gets brought back, then we would, if we were to issue a refund to, to someone in a case that I just, example I just gave, we would be right back to the same place where we're reissuing this, this cart and charging it for. But I, I, you know, the question is, is a good one, is all these people that were made to buy a cart, now they're not recycling, but the cart, do we refund them? Do we, you know, do we potentially trade maybe? There's a, there's a host of things that we could do that are.
And I only bring it up just because I want the public to know. I'm not saying that we should refund anything right now.
Right, right.
We're, we're, we're just.
Just the transparency.
Yes, we're, we're only suspending the program. But I have been, I said, I have been asked by residents, will the town continue their pickup using their own personnel in the fall? And that question was asked, and I think we need to answer that at some point. I guess it would be in November, is that when we took with it, started?
Uh, yes, sir. We, the winter schedule would go back, um, different person.
Again, that, that has been asked, I think at some point, we need to, 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 uh.
Maybe address, address that.
And I do appreciate the, the extra co-mingle cart or co-mingle trailer at Public Works. I know you're doing a great job of trying to get that information out, and I hope that we, continuing, staff is continuing to monitor the trailer here, plus the ones, the new ones that'll be there for cleanliness.
Yes, sir.
I think that's important as well. Again, thank you for your, for your time and the information provided.
It, it seems, maybe intuitive that we would bring back to you the, the ordinance dealing with the number of carts, because right now, it says, like I said, a rental house has to have three green and three blue. So if a house were to get a certificate of occupancy today, going by today's code, obviously, we're not going to give them a blue can. We're, you know, I've directed staff, don't sell any blue cans, don't give anybody any blue can. But we, the code's heavily, and, you know, we could change it, maybe at your next meeting, and then very likely, we could change it again. If you change it, or you're going, I don't want to give the perception or the impression that it's final. I, I don't even want to think that, well, they've changed the code, they're, that's the direction they're going. It would be a temporary change. Or we just continue not to issue the blue cans and.
I think you handle that in-house, based on occupancy, with the green cans. Those, those houses are typically need that amount of trash picked up.
Yes, for example, a house that were to be seen the other day, we'd issue, we'd sell them six green, six trash cans. And that, that wouldn't be free, because they'd have the number of cans. But again, that's not what the ordinance says.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of a tidy way, and no, you're trying to think of a tidy way to do this without changing the ordinance. It seemed to me that, I guess we theoretically could go back, but it would seem to me that during any period of time when a program's suspended like this one, suspended, then obviously you're not giving out recycling containers or substituted trash cans for what would normally have been a recycling container. And if the recycling came back, you'd swap out three of those trash cans for three recycling.
Can I ask the town attorney a question?
Yes.
Are there any issues, or what issues do we have in the ordinance on the books? And even though the town is using their discretion and not issuing recycling carts, is there any problems for us there with not following the ordinance as a means?
Well, the, the program would suspend crap, which I think is a temporary measure of the legality of that, but I think if it went indefinitely, it extended, I realize that it's not an immediate, yes, it was a decision. Town's looking for recycling options. They're looking to, to provide the service, considering the additional ways of delivering the, to your purpose to the site, and continuing to look into how to reenact the program without necessarily doing it. But I think in the process of this, I don't see any concerns about it. We still have an ordinance, recycling, in effect.
May I mention one thing for clarification? We're not doing this at all for COVID. We're doing it because there's been a change in the people that accept it. So it's still a temporary thing, but I want to make sure, I've been trying to make sure to a lot of people that we're not talking about COVID when we're talking about recycling. And I just heard you, I think, mentioned COVID is a temporary thing, and I want to make sure that the temporary thing is we don't have somebody that'll accept it.
That's, that's correct. Well, I was trying to say it's not related to that, but this arose back in the summer before, in the, before, hearing that information from the town attorney, then I think we're safe with what Commissioner Spears, our thinking, that, that we could just let the manager, staff handle it internally. But if that question comes up about us violating our own ordinance, I think it's safe to say that we've got information from our town attorney that for a suspension, we're okay.
Anything else for Cliff to say?
Cliff? No, this would be one of the things.
Okay.
Um, I had, and this isn't already on your agenda, and I apologize, but I had a request to ask for consideration from one of our tenant vendors, concierge service providers. As you know, the ordinance says that items that they set up on the beach have to be removed by six o'clock, no, I'm sorry, five o'clock.
Yes.
And this particular vendor has asked it, consider giving them an additional hour, and reason being is that they're trying, they're trying to practice social distancing, which is hard to do, and they're, they're taking materials down if people are still on the beach. They want to sanitize the material that they take down because it could be used by somebody entirely different the same next week. But they're, they're asking through this period of time that they'd be able to have an additional hour, and, and that would go from six to seven, give them time to sanitize the equipment. It, again, the, the ordinance is police powers, so you can change this without public hearing, but again, it, I could have stranded it, but I'd be in violation of the ordinance. And if someone were out there at six-thirty and company had, still had their tenant, it would be in violation. So the, the question would be to, to consider, you don't have to consider this now, I just, I did want to introduce it, it can be brought back at the June seventeenth, in the form of a agenda, I mean, a ordinance adoption, ordinance amendment.
Right, temporary, with the ordinance we just passed, the temporary use, cover that since it's a change of use, special need during an executive order, because you don't want to change that now, and then it turn around and last forever. And if you do it for one, you do it for all, for all.
What, what you passed, what you passed was a zoning, this is not a zoning provision, I believe what you passed was a, was a zoning provision. But, well.
Similar, though. Yeah, I mean, can, can we, yeah, Mike makes a, a good point. Can we have something similar to that? A modification could be issued for a permit period of up to ninety days, or the same language we used for the other provision? Can we do that?
My immediate thought is you could. Difficult to do with zoning, other than, doesn't, so, I, I would think we can.
Bring it along, Brad. Something that looks like that back.
I think to Commissioner Coon's point, when we discussed this report, the hour is for the purpose of sanitizing and collection, it's not extension of the period.
Some of that will co-mingle.
It will, oh, yeah, there, there's no doubt. People will be there till they're told.
Your thoughts, Commissioner Fuller?
Um, I agree. I mean, I think we should make reasonable accommodations where we need to make reasonable accommodations. Here again, I'm always of a suspicious nature, and that tends to make me believe that somebody will try to take advantage of this. As long as people aren't trying to take advantage, I have no problem making reasonable accommodations. I, and I, and I'm, just as a sidebar, I do know there's been a lot of interaction between the lifeguards, police, and individuals on the beach over the past couple of weeks, and it's all been extremely positive, and I just want to compliment staff that, you know, and why I'm saying, what I'm saying about reasonable accommodations is because I think we've got lifeguards and police on the beach that are telling people what they need to do and when they need to do it, and I really appreciate it that that's happening.
So, yes.
And they'll be able to monitor whether people are taken advantage of.
Thank you.
That brings us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda, to debate how to stay.
I have a question. Can we get a, a statement from the sidewalk progression from Lakeside down to Allen Mall, and what our timelines are?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, the deputy manager, myself, and town engineer actually met yesterday with RPC, with their pit engineer, the owner Robbie Parker, and Jay Hawk Cawley, who's a supervisor on the project. I'll say that the, the June substantial completion is still June nineteenth. That's going to take some time for them to catch up. They committed to put additional resources on this project. The, the issues, I think this project is presented in the south end around that, at McHale, excuse me, around exit outlet, there's some, there's a tremendous amount of conflict. So I think the portion up by whole next day code, I'm comfortable will be substantially completed by June nineteenth. It's going to take them putting additional resources, the south end of the project, to be able to realize that substantial completion date. And I'm looking for the, the entire completion date.
Good to know you've had that conversation with them.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, I mean, you've all seen that the, the traffic pattern has been problematic, especially when the lane arrows there at Dan U. We've asked the past two Fridays for them, Memorial Day, and then this past Friday, the, you know, every time you, you ask for them to take time off, it, it somehow comes back twice. But they've recognized, you know, their safety, they don't want to, the, the, hundreds of their guys as well. So, so they, they are trying to knock off earlier on projects, especially with traffic. And I don't know if you had anything to add, but, but I believe the final completion was July third. And so.
What's the original?
July third. They're, they're committed to, to, to stick into those dates, faith, they, faith that they recognize the urgency of getting this project done. I mean, we, as you all know, ordinarily, there's a little break from Memorial Day, at least until school gets out, but we're not realizing that break this year because it's been out for a month. So, we've communicated that to them, and David's been, convinced Jonathan Tom on this, trying to make sure that they do stay on top of it, that if there is a conflict, I'm saying conflict underground, utility, for example, they're working now around a twenty-four inch main, that he is ahead of it and tries to get any obstacles or time issues out of the way ahead of him. We're, we're doing all we can to hold for that substantial completion.
The business is in that area roughly, timeline, which are concerned about, the Americans walked off, turned, we press, we press.
We, we discuss that, too. It's a lot easier to get it done up here, but the inconvenience is less than it is down at the other end with businesses in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on? Anything else on the Board of Commissioners' agenda, the board members? We're skipping the visioning discussion for the, for the time being, so we sort of get back to normal. And before I go to the closed session that today are under the, under my agenda, I do want to ask for a moment of silence for several people. As you may know, one of our former firefighters, Ryan Dodson, died very tragically a few weeks ago. So, we should remember him and his, his family. I know he was married, did he have children?
Did not have children, he was married, his wife Casey.
Yeah. Thank you. So, we should keep Casey in our, in our thoughts. And the other is, they were, they were friends of many of us, and they were Raven and her son Sebby, who were lost in the house fire also a few weeks ago. Not an Axet resident, but known to a lot of people in the town of Axet. Raven actually looked some of the music for the first outrageous that we had at Dowey Park. And so, that was, that was a tragic situation. I know a lot of the community is thinking about how we can try to prevent that, that apparently it was a grill that was unattended at that apartment building, and Fire Safety Week, and then we have tragedies like this, and I know our guys do their best to protect the community out there, but... I mean, a few moments of silence for Raven, Sebby, and Brian. And with that, I believe that the only business that we have before us is closed session for a personnel matter in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A6, and to consult with the attorney to protect attorney-client privilege in accordance with General Statute
The item for me is in order to discuss the Blackburn litigation.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion as to...
Affect?
Affect.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. The board will be closed session. Board is returned to its session. Mr. Lighty, will you report on the closed session?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The board did discuss the Blackburn litigation with the town attorney, and also discussed a confidence of personnel matters, but no actions were taken.
Thank you. Is there any other business coming for the board? In that case, a motion to recess to our workshop at 10:00 AM Tuesday.
Sub move, aye.
Question in a second.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, Tuesday, 9.
Tuesday at 9, 10 o'clock. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you.